Councilmember Morrison.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember.
Middleman.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Fergenty. Mayor for Tendry, here. Mayor Lobby.
Here. Max is going to be running this a little bit late. Tim will not be here tonight. So. At this time, I will ask for approval of the agenda.
Oh, we have an addition to the agenda. I would like to add an executive session to the agenda.
Is this an emergency executive session because it's not posted?
Uh, I don't know.
It's required to be posted 24 hours in advance if it's not an emergency.
Well, I.
Let's let Christiana speak to that. I don't, I don't have an opinion on it. You know, Christiana, it has been asked that is this an emergency executive session? If not, why wasn't it posted in advance?
Or do we have to post it in advance?
Well, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so for executive sessions, they, the, the rule is that they have to be held during a regular or special meeting and that is it. That is the rule. There's no like rule that it has to be posted in advance necessarily. Oftentimes, if there is knowledge that it is coming up, then it will be posted in advance on the agenda, but there's no requirement that it be posted with the agenda, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
We move to go into executive session under sections two, four, dash, six, dash, four, oh, two, four, B of the Colorado Revised Statutes for Legal Advice on Specific Legal Questions Concerning Matters Related to the Police Department. I further move to reconvene the October 18 city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session in order to proceed with the remaining items on the agenda.
Grant, second.
Thank you, Jim. We'll call, please.
Mayor for Tendry, yes. Councilmember Morrison, yeah. Councilmember Luna, yes. Councilmember for Dempsey?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes. Please note that Councilwoman Fergenty is here. Thank you. At this time, we are going to adjourn to the upstairs conference room. I have been told to say very brief executive session. We'll be back shortly.
Matt.
I don't see you here. For Christiana, so.
And we'll be right back there in 60 seconds.
Okay. Thank you. The time is now 6:27 and the executive session has concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Greg Lobby, Councilmember Tracy Laritzon, Mayor for Tendry Green, Councilman Max Fergenty, Councilmember Christian Luna Rayal, Councilmember Shannon Grant, City Administrator Lori Simonsen, City Attorney Christian McCormick, and Deputy City Clerk Maida Silver. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing that, I will entertain a motion. Actually, we already have a motion to reconvene and a second. In which case, I will just have roll call because we did that as, as part of the a motion to go into executive session. So it's the same, same motion, same second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morrison, yeah. Councilmember Luna Rayal?
Yes.
Mayor for Tendry?
Yes.
Councilmember for Dempsey?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Present, yes. Yes, something.
Sorry. Mayor Lobby.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we are asking if there's anything that anybody in the council would like to speak about?
I do, ma'am.
Oh, you do? Go ahead.
I do. I was out, had dinner out in town this past week, a weekend, and when we were walking back downtown, I encountered two sandwich board signs that were obstructing the sidewalk. And so just wanted to bring that to your attention. I shared some photos with Maida to share with council. And it just concerns me that, that we're going to wait until January to, to revisit that issue. But if someone had needed access to that either on crutches or in a wheelchair, they would not have been able to navigate our sidewalks safely.
Thank you for that observation. I'm looking forward to that conversation and I agree. It's a shame we have to wait quite that long, but you know, in a case like that, I would say the street department has every right to just move so that they're not in the right way to. If you guys, if you guys see him, just, you know, we have to have six feet of clearance on the sidewalk.
Which were the business account?
This one is the red, as the blue.
And the other one was before and after.
Okay, thank you very much. Real quick, I'd like to talk about the, the very honor that we have as a city to attend the president's dedication of the National Monument of Camp Hale. Laura Simonsen and I were honored to attend. We had two county commissioners there, Caleb and Sarah, you know, all kind of before it was represented in Leadville. And it was quite a day. And don't you fault?
I was not there, unfortunately, but I.
I'm sorry to hear it, I did.
But we did do a great job setting that, so I hope everything worked out.
It could not have been any better. I mean, it was pretty flawless. Thanks to you and the Secret Service.
It was about 15 force service employees as well that set that up.
Good.
It was a fun, fun event, but.
I have a couple of things I'll talk about before, but I really wanted to bring that to the public's attention. You know, some things that we get to do as public officials are really special, and that is pretty special. Any other help you can add? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we would entertain public comments on items that are not on the agenda. If anybody, either in the room or on Zoom, would like to speak to city council, please come up, introduce yourself, give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Tim Burford. I'm here as a private citizen tonight. One, four, oh, two, West Fourth Street. Speaking of cool things that happened in our community last weekend, as well as the film festival, which demonstrated an awesome film about a local who demonstrates the determination and grit of this city and this community. But one thing I have noticed since moving here and one thing that was pointed out to me by this remarkable local is the lack of handicap parking spaces, especially in city or lots. So the lot across from the Tabor does not have a handicap parking spot. Not 100% sure the Tabor itself does or hasn't assigned, maybe they've been moved from the.
It, it used to. I think they've dissipated over time, but thank you.
Yeah, but that's all I just wanted to bring to the city council's attention is that we do have amazing numbers of our community where there's many able, disabled. And that's something that city council should consider.
Thank you very much. I would say that's something that we've been talking, the street department was winter about. When we go to do painting in the spring, we're going to make sure downtown and in the parking lots that we, we have adequate handicap parking. You're going to have to remind me, Ken. Does anybody who would like to speak to city council, if you're on Zoom, speaking on, on items not on the agenda, just unmute and talk to us. Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which is the approval of the October 4, 2022 minutes.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sorry, green second.
So you have a discussion. I'll give people time to browse quickly. Any changes needed to the minutes? Right, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Okay, next up, we have the public reports. We'll start with the police department report. Chief, I have it.
One big news, only thing, we, we also participated in the presidential visit. So we were behind the scenes.
I saw one of your officers, officers as, as we came in, also for Zella.
Yeah, we were there. That's all I had.
Okay. Any questions for the police department in the report? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have the fire department report.
So Chief Daly let me know that he was not able to attend tonight and now there were either of his other chiefs, but you'll notice that his report is in a slightly different format. It's the first couple pages are bullet points and these are summaries. And then the next information is just data on the calls. And so this was something that he, the chief and I had been working on to, to get information to the council in a concise format that's helpful to all. So I guess just for tonight, please let me know if this format is, if you like the format, if you have suggestions on it or positive, negative, and I will take it back to the chief because we're, we're working on getting the council information and the department reports that is helpful and not cumulative, let's put it that way. So if you have any, you can let me know now or you can.
Well, I would say I have, I had some questions and I, I guess I'm disappointed that no one from the fire department can represent them at, at once a month city council meeting. That, that feels, just doesn't feel acceptable to me. I'll just leave that out there. And I think that somebody should have been there.
Okay, I'll convey that information. The chief did let me know he was going to be out these days in advance.
No, I understand that, but, but then it should be incumbent upon him to have someone who can speak to his department report.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I next up, we have the street department.
Yeah, we're continuing the painting of the road. We're finishing up while I'm working there. We don't have too many left. We're staying on top of cycleways and still making sure that all their packages are closed and finished off here real soon. I did talk to them about the concrete can that is supposed to be on him. Too late. He didn't sit by us, so they're not going to be able to do it. Ask him. So we're going to have to keep on him to do that and we will.
You probably already figured out how I feel about that.
Yes. You could also form by hand. Some of those pans are relatively small.
These are all completely across the school. All the ones that had pine, we wanted, there were eight pans that were supposed to be on pine. And that was part of the deal, so.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Grant can't hear very well with the owl unless someone is close to one of the owls. So if someone's making a report, if they can step closer to the owl, that would be wonderful.
Maybe we, are they hearing well from the lectern?
Yeah. Are you hearing well from the lectern? Yes.
Can you? Okay, we're just finishing up while I'm working there. We're getting ready for the owls. He's already started the neck down with like 100 watts on each side of the fence and I'm grading all the owls, getting ready for winter time. Next week, one of my great returns from vacation, we're going to finish the rest of the major hours that need to be done. So they'll be ready for winter as well. We get ready to start putting off files and get all that winterizing ready to go for winter. And hopefully we have a mild winter. This will be my first one that I've spoken about it, so I'll be learning as we go. If you have any concerns about that as well.
I would ask the alley up there off of Ash between 11th and 12th. We had told those, those, those three houses that back onto that alley off of 12th Street, that we would prep that alley and that we would plow this winter. Is that on your list?
It will be now. I didn't know about it.
You only have to do to pass those three houses. We're not going to do the whole alley though. So.
I'm taking you up there and showing some of the areas, but we, we bothered a little bit.
Mark, Mark would you know? Or that.
She didn't got one, isn't getting ready.
All right.
I have a question.
I have a comment, a question would come up first. We normally don't get our LA plant to put a big spot in them. We need to put a five of telling you not to blow our alley.
Which alley will they?
It's between six and seven, between orange and I have an edge.
That's right on that aerial construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's that whole alley that goes down through there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll pop the mark and all that, just give you my alley back and that stuff. And they should be paving that second here.
But I would love to add, you have on orange, which is dirt, which was seventh and sixth. Is that snow storage considered there? I didn't know that, but but it's a, it's a giant dip. It's a big hole, I think.
Yeah, but it's actually two holes. One of our neighbors got some rope, it's need filled one of them, yeah.
Okay.
But there's still a hole.
I'm just going to suggest.
Yeah, we can call it like.
I'm going to suggest that if we're prepping owls, maybe we, we prep that hole too, even if it's snow storage, it would get it ready for next summer. All right?
Like that. It's, yeah, it's all, I'm making black arrows and you get the paper.
It's going to get in this.
Okay.
He is, he is mature, but he will be here this week to finish that. He ran out of paint. Last week, I'm going to see another town to do section right here, but let's see if all, and it was deeper than what I thought. But yes, I'm already on my own now.
All right.
Any other questions for street department? Thank you, Tony. Next up, we have animal shelter.
Thank you very much. So for September, it was a little slower. We had six adopters, 22 in pounds. We were from the city and four in are from the county. October is a crazy year month already. We have nine dogs and six kennels, so we have multiple dogs that are back to that. One fold, the owner was in a hospital. The owner is now considered an empty person. So we're working with little lawn person and the other counties on that situation. We have a white horned hen dog, one stray that came in tonight, one dog that went into foster today, and then five adoptable dogs. Four of those were recent surrenderes due to housing issues. Cat line, we have one adoptable cat that wasn't moving straight, and then three cats are currently being fostered here. And then attached to the packets, this was a third party analysis from statewide shelter engagement. Former neighbor and I gave her. So the first page here shows the regional comparison of our shelter to four others. On here, we're closest in dates to Godson County. They had 288 where we had 280. The second page then explains the SBI for those of you who may not, may not be familiar with that. And then on the first page, it says that our is point four, four by two. So closest for us in that would be Fremont County, Wyoming, which of course is why they are considered in there. They're not necessarily regional for us.
What is that SBI number?
So on the second page, we really picked the lowest vulnerability and the highest. And then on the third page here, this was kind of a shelter analysis, so performing point one pack the dimension from 2018 to 2022, there were at least six violations in the in February of this year, we passed with 100% compliance. Onto our annual stats, those are from our pack of stats last year. So total adoptions, we had 130 and then those break them down for dog and cats. And then intake, the reason that intake is not going to meet adoption is thankfully a lot of those were reclaimed by their owners. Dating care enforcement over, but we've been pinned to, we're not going to make it without vet care until they pass away. Last year, we did not have any natives. This year, we've had one dog, a long living, a wild and a new cat. We then given those and the others, yeah, very old safe cat. Next is the staffing and capacity for here. So on there, they mentioned one full time kennel set per day just to meet the minimum standard for animal care. And then all other components of the shelters must be done with additional staff. So that supervision, customer care, case management, things that they have with to care. And then four would be bowls. So shelters, the proclamation are moving forward with preventative programs to help animals stay in their homes without ever getting left animals in the shelter. So here they have pet vaccines, microtipping clinics, pet food banks, behavior training and support services, and then additional safety net facilities.
You talked about one dog that had attacked a child and you have another dog in now with fight. Are these going before municipal court? Are they going before county court? How would those vicious animals be then?
The first one in county, I do not know if they fall under the charts with dangerous dog, but we did try to get them to. The current by quarantine was here in the city and they are being charged with a dangerous dog.
Thank you.
And I mentioned with Lori today, hopefully getting with both the city and the county court, and we would create kind of a program. I don't know, honestly, I've never had a DUI, but then when you get one, you have to go through these different education processes. So something similar where people would learn about body language, preventive management, the bike that happened recently, unfortunately, with the level five, which is multiple fractures in our mauling, and that they've been permitted into the block with the model.
As you know, our code requires training, even with first like, even the first offense requires training.
Unfortunately, a lot of these, they are their first offensive, yes, are the mauling situation.
And Caitlin and I met with Sheriff Speckman a while back to, to work on follow-up on some of these dangerous dog cases. And so he's working to address some of these with his deputies.
He's willing to do that, but right now they're not following up?
They are overworked and, and so they understand its priority and they, we've connected them with Kathleen is with the Colorado Maine, I keep wanting to say the wrong organization, so Colorado Maine to give assistance with investigation. And so we've met with Sheriff Speckman to emphasize this is an important issue for us and he agrees. And right now it's just a resource issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the animal shelter? Tracy, yes, please.
You had a, it's a, from an expert. Can you tell, open? Yeah, I was going to type that up and send it to everybody. So quick spin off this. He had lots of compliments that he kind of expected the word hearing. It was a small shelter and we had the cleanest dog kennel setup he's seen with that type of drainage that was a lot of crap there. He did say our facility is so small that he would recommend that we don't take cats. That we shouldn't have cats in the building due to car size. But obviously he wants us to take cat in and he knows there's need. So I am working with the modular kennel company for riding kennels to try and see if we can, none of their modulars would fit our needs. So we're trying to work together to see if they complete some things and that way we would have a separate locker with building for the cats. The quote we were looking at before we gain our, it would be hopefully cheaper, it's now like 68,000. And then he did recommend in two to three years having a different facility that would be more of like an animal care facility that would need to have strays and adoptable separate and of course isolation, if you don't have isolation. Thank you.
That's really great. If you could get that modular kennel building, in what timeframe would you be able to get it?
I think typically there is a six month, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, once again, we don't own that property, correct?
Um, that's great.
Yep, so modular building or not, I'm still going to suggest that we get a survey of the lots that we own up on top of 13th Street and see and actually design, show you that's actually sustainable for community and not try to shove around, peg into a circle, however you want to make that knowledge and go. And you have opportunities to do that in, in that, that facility, it's found a facility to something different with this, yeah, and so. If there's, I mean, that's, it's a small area. And if they're going to require more, I think we should look at the long term solution of our animal shelter for our community.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts on that?
I agree.
Okay.
I just want to say congratulations on this improvement on the pack of inspections. That's just over a year and it's, I'm, I know that was a tremendous amount of work and it's great. Yeah, like they, all departments do a lot of thankless work and, but so thank you all for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Okay, the next report we have is the building department, the county census is just really running some numbers in terms of valuation and and the amount of money that, that they end up charging for the, that for me. Any thoughts on that? Okay, next up, planning department.
Jake. Good evening, Mayor Council. On being straightforward, your packet has a two page now. Follow, you know, for some of that. So we, as you're aware, because you're using plan appearance, we processed all backlog volunteering applications, as you've seen recently. So that's great. We do have a whole pending applications model really are. And I worked with Christiana and the city administrator on the Boy House project on the building on Street. They're conditioning you for application for that in terms of expected applications. That the Community Justice Center is very much an active project in the preliminary application phase. Last week at one commission, one commission, a little work session to review primary site plan, the role to commissioner president of the work were in support of the site plan. That site plan, just FYI, does improve a re-arrangement of the unplatted Monroe, Monroe Street to accommodate the target. So more on that. That is in the pre-application phase and the requested preliminary comments from all of various references. Um that is in the uh pre-application phase and requested preliminary comments from all various referral agencies.
The I would like to interrupt, I think that's a huge mistake. I can't even, I can't even believe it, consider it.
The main driver for that is the it was my comment regarding not having parking in the front yard. And so we need to find another location for parking. One of the count, I think one of the county commissioners said, well, uh what if we relocated a portion of Monroe out? Um so I've evaluated the frozen tons to planning mission. Um and I am have not received any comments from any of the referral agencies. So I'm trying at that one, we're requesting this feedback for comments just like that. So we are.
I would take fire department, that would probably, I would take street department, that would probably, it it, you know, it would affect everything regarding last street.
Yeah, I thi- I think that that was one of my comments in the design to be impactful to the properties that serve the east. Um so I've got a full evaluation of that, but more important on that. Regarding the rail yard hotel, uh that's located in phase two, the PUD for rail yards. Um I, as of last week, I informed the the developer that their PUD was the city council approved a year ago. Um it was approved with conditions that basically come back revise the plan for the conditions of approval. That was never done, it was never signed, it was never recorded, so there's not zoning in place for phase two. Uh so the ball market for developers work to get that zoning in place uh for that PUD document. Before we can even begin providing pre-application costs, which they request. Regarding construction, also in the rail yards, this is the biggest construction item. Uh I completed inspections out there, the the surface, surface level inspections. Um what I can tell, public improvements, streets, sidewalks, curb, garden, stormwater, all those things are approximately eighty five percent. Especially for the lose approximation, uh there are things that remain to be done. The subdivision improvements agreement, which was approved by the city is expired. We have met with the developer and have requested an extension for that. Uh for that subdivision improvements agreement with updated costs for what current margin labor materials. Um and to tie some of the remaining persons to the COs of of remaining homes. Uh so we can start tracking that a little bit better. Um the developer is agreeable to that and have impacted conversations with. Code amendment schedule including your packet, uh just to briefly summarize that, that includes uh. That's night, uh you will be seeing the demolition of historic structures, government, uh regarding historic reservation. The subdivision amendments for townhomes and complexes, they're going to plan a commission next week for the first time. The uh policy advisory team recommendations for the housing recommendations, we have that scheduled for November ninth, planning zone commission. The table of uses updates uh is scheduled for a joint work session, believe as you're all aware. Uh with planning zoning commission yourselves on with the. And then finally, um I'm uh Lori and myself and Christian are working on. Uh further amendments to the historic district regulations uh regarding the commission's curvy, the HBC's curvy. Uh on your agenda tonight is the uh the planning zoning commissioner appointment, so we'll discuss that later. Uh just that way, I've uh completed my uh my credential training for the year, recently attempted to confess. A lot of takeaways from those conferences on how um a lot of house sessions. That's where takeaways you have. Uh finally, just other matters. I am attending the housing authority meetings and I volunteer to uh be on their development subcommittee. We presented the planning, we presented the presented the transportation improvements that. Uh Jeff uh Bieber, Commissioner Bieber presented to you, I mean, here to build, present those two planning zone commissioners. The two that were present last week at a work session and they were fully in support. And then lastly, the Slav home CUP application to the county. Uh was approved by the board of county commissioners with uh it was a conditional approval with conditions. Uh the basically the holler agreed to uh help fund planning and design work for an alternate. Uh truck by actual all of them. I can take any question you can ask the last.
Any question for Taylor? Yes.
We go back to the rail yard subdivision agreement agreement, there's a too many ala bottom. And we're hoping back correct.
I don't, I apologize, I don't remember the exact number. Yes, we have only an estimate.
Um and another option is to use that to complete the improvement that he outside completed, is that correct?
Technically, yes, that that is the, that that agreement says that those those CEOs shall be issued until all public improvements are completed. That's really not typically how development is known, how SIA are written. Um I think, I think we're, we're still okay as long as, as long as we're getting that extension from the developer. Um uh because we don't want to have to go out and um and build that ourselves and hire someone else. Basically ex- uh enforce that agreement by using someone else to complete those improvements. Um uh developer has uh agreed that all this will be done by next summer. Of course, that's not guaranteed till it's it's in writing. Um and I I definitely want to. When when we take in the revised uh with the extension agreement for the revised SIA, definitely want to modify. Uh the language in there so that like I said earlier, so that uh these upcoming improvements that are mainly done. Um it's a lot of them are not done, snow is flying, it's going to either be in the next few weeks or it's going to be in the spring. Uh that those are tires we see those for for homes, I think that's reasonable because those public improvements are needed to service those remaining homes.
I I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting, but I don't think there's a bomb, I think there's an escrow. Two completely different effects, but the escrow is actually more fluid than a bomb, so it's better, better for us.
And just to, you know, we we did meet with the rail arts developer, um Chapin and I and uh the mayor. And he, you know, we did encourage him to finish up and he has indicated that he's been doing work within the last week or so to finish up. Uh some of.
I think his words were we have motivated them.
We have motivated him to finish up.
My concern is he's working on me too, he hasn't finished phase one and he hasn't recorded a plan for phase two yet.
Correct, he has not recorded.
Okay, he's working on it, you can see that he's already working on things too.
Yeah, I've honed in my inspections on phase one, really starting at a high level with the getting the SIA. Uh which really pertains to the infrastructure for the existing homes, uh because we already seen.
So I guess the answer to it is, is we're really, really glad that Chapin is here and he can dig in on this. I mean, and and honestly, just this, you know, you talk about resources at city hall. We existing people at city hall would not have had bandwidth to do what Chapin just told you he did. Which was look through piece by piece, the SIA, find out what's been completed, go out and do an inspection and then meet with the developer. We did a punch list, we met with the developer and went over a punch list and so it's very clear what we, we know what still needs to be done. And you know, as far as being on phase two, you know, Chapin's keeping an eye on what they're requesting and is is not gonna let essentially, you know. Proceed without them doing what they need to do. So we are very grateful for Chapin to be here to have the bandwidth. And the knowledge and experience to to do this, you know.
Is the work on phase two. Allowable without the plastic recorded and needing the conditions of the plan?
I'll, I'll have to look into that. I don't have an answer this time and really it really comes down to. Uh you know, the the documents that are existing for phase two are, uh we we don't, don't have as many, we don't have a plot. So I guess I I don't really know what other documents are in place for phase two other than. Other than where it shows the phase, phase one PUD with, you know, an area for future development and so. I'll have to look into that. I don't know if we had regulatory documents or that underlying, other than the underlying some.
I was out there today with Excel, we were looking at the underground of the poles because you know, some of that still hasn't happened after six years. But nonetheless, I was going over it with Nathan, but um there's no building going on in phase two. The 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 two fourplexes are putting up are in phase one, just on the other side of the third part. So the road behind that is this is the dividing line between phase one and phase two. That's correct?
Sound rare, yeah. Mayor.
Yeah.
And then, thank you very much, Jason, for what you're doing. Really appreciate it. Uh and thank you for the forecasting hours as we're anticipating from planning department, which I think is fantastic. One thing that uh yet another task uh out there, if you can, and I don't know if it's entitled fifteen or not. But I do feel that we need to do some sort of erosion control. Art of construction in town, uh what happened up on uh second street. At one point of where there was no erosion control measures, real erosion control measures created during construction. Creating flooding into private property. Also that if there was storm drains, that's concrete is being overloaded and that type of situation over there. If there's uh you know, rocks, material going into any of these places, we're just making a mess in the future. When my crew pick up like stupid storm circles and anything like that, and it's gonna be a big deal. And so I mean, I don't necessarily think that we have anything in our code right now to tell people to have. I have equipped erosion control measures in place with construction activities. However, I think that we need to make sure that they are confined to the construction areas themselves. Because what I am seeing during storms and luckily we run on high pressure, but once it rains. We see construction material all over our streets and roads, which then puts it on us to clean up without having the murders in place. So um I know you have a long laundry list, if you don't mind, just throwing that or a backpack burner of your radar screen. And so we can have it come up in the future, that'd be fantastic.
Sure, absolutely. I think the best way to do about that is is to have erosion control standards for not settling, giving property or debris, destruction, etc. And then at Lake County, when they take in building applications, we have written our code, require construction management plans. So when you wanna, when you got a big set of plans getting stamped in the building department, the, you know, other than the title sheet, there's a first page. It has construction management shows where is parking going, where is erosion goal or portal, that's all those things. And then that is that is enforceable, the inspectors, we don't have, we want to, the building inspectors can actually be responsible for enforcement.
Thank you for the purple.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. You got away from it, okay, I think you're fucked. Uh this time we have several things, the sales tax comparison, uh which I think you've all seen. Uh the trending continues to be. By record standard and we've already seen uh a projection of the numbers for next month, they're even bigger. So uh Donna, any thoughts on that? Can you give us reasons?
I'm buying a lot of stuff. Yeah, especially in in light of like them saying things are definitely slowing down. I mean, I know those are, numbers are two months behind, but.
It'll be interesting to see if if we do see the numbers slow down by the end of the year, but we've already seen the numbers for the next month and they're. They are in excess of this.
Yeah, which is crazy considering that everything indicates the inflation is gonna continue, so. Knocking on wood, um Donna continues to still buy a lot of stuff.
We're gonna hope. Thank you, Donna. Uh financials, you're up, Donna.
Um I first would like to report that we're in accommodations collections this month or third quarter. Um and so far, a hundred and two people have paid and it's about seventy thousand dollars.
Oh, really? And so you still have another eighty people need to pay?
Yeah, I I mean, I'd.
In the next two weeks.
Yes, I mean, yes, and really, reality, yes, it should be about, was at least sixty people, seventy people maybe.
That could be a really big number.
But if you look at a spreadsheet I sent out yesterday, we've already exceeded, we should have already exceeded our three hundred thousand dollar limit. I'm very nervous.
Oh, really?
What money is gonna come in because we, you don't want to be repunding taxes.
That would be a major mistake on our part. Oh, we thought we would be very, very, you know, no way. Yeah, well, we we were thinking. We had one number at like two thirteen and a number, another number two forty, nothing that even approached three hundred thousand dollars, so.
The, I will say the motels are the biggest majority here.
You might wanna consider uh tact holiday than November and something just in case.
That's actually an interesting idea to keep us under.
I will.
I'll try to see what, yeah, yes, I'll definitely try to keep track of that. It's unfortunate, maybe now that I've done it quarterly.
I may not know that in time, right? That's what I'm, yeah.
I mean, even if we come a bit under that figure, I think. We'll find, and it's probably gonna cost us much more to do any refunds than it would to just say. And taxes for those too much.
Yeah, we can, what were you doing this fair time?
You're gonna have a lot of time.
Yep.
This is just a thought, this probably wouldn't work, but could you forgive them for the following two months? Probably not, because this has to be in the calendar year. You know, if it does come over, could we forgive the taxes in January?
I don't think so, because the chapter one, it's just the first year.
Yeah, just a thought.
Well, uh let's hope we don't hit that threshold, but uh that's a scary thought.
As far as the financials go, um. The paving, I have got to wrap my head around this of how I'm gonna handle. The deferred money from the last two years versus what we did versus the money we're gonna get from the other entities. Um so the street department looks a little off, but if we back all of that out, it's not because I. I need to wrap my head around before I start moving things around and then, no, that didn't work, you know, so I just need to really think about that. Um other than that, everything really looks, looks.
I would like to report the paving because we were trying to get our actual cost under five hundred thousand dollars. And we negotiated with all three uh entities today, uh one of them has to get back with me and I have to get some more information, but we have an approximation. Uh we're going, our cost is going to end up being four hundred ninety three thousand one hundred forty nine dollars. That's what I have right this second, uh but I think it's pretty close and I think it may be the number. And we had five hundred thousand dollars in that, in that column. Um so right this second, uh it looks pretty good.
And so that's excellent work, that is the mayor's work to work with the facilities to get that. Um under budget, squeaking under budget, but under budget is under budget, so thank you.
Well, and also just doing a quick, you know, down and dirty on these, uh uh everybody uh is under budget. Uh even the street department looks like they're over budget, they're not, if you uh, if you make adjustments for some things, some issues in there that we're gonna move around. Um and also with with uh with every department, if they have uh expenses that are front loaded at the beginning of the year, doing expenses. Then you have to, as you're looking at each month, you have to take a percentage uh in order to to make that number making sense to you. And I have to do that with two different uh departments. Um and so every, everybody's really in good shape. Any questions for Donna? And Donna, any more thoughts on this?
Um, no, I've been busy with budget and accommodations tax this month, so.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, it's basically pain bills.
Any questions for Mr. Schneider?
If people are late paying the accommodation tax or they don't pay the accommodations tax and then they have to come. Up with it later on, does that count retroactively to our three thousand dollar limit, even if they end up paying late?
I think it's, we have private cash basis, we should probably request some people to pay us. I think it's, we have private cash basis, we should provide requests of people to pay us late. Yeah, okay.
We'll wait the, the finance charge of the interest.
I think that's a question for Chris.
Yeah.
Probably we can ask her about that later.
But she's probably behind the scenes, just.
We'll figure out how to cross that bridge when we come through it.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have bills. We have lots and lots and lots of bills. I don't know, talking about this, this is mostly driven, as you can see, pages and pages and pages because of while unemployment. Uh, and paying all those bills, um.
I wanna. I just want to encourage people not to go to fast foods.
Don't to do it.
All of like the. You're gonna tell me that, that they only have a few minutes, right, Max, and they.
Walmart.
They have to.
I ate Wendy's on the way. I wonder if there was one, one cost or, uh, a damage to. A vehicle for the Fourth Street repair. That's where it shows, um.
That was, uh, um, the street department was doing some repairs on Fourth Street and the person. Damaged the undercarriage of their vehicle, so we, what we did is we paid their deductible for the damage of that vehicle.
Oh, like while we were repairing the street, they went over and repaired and damaged their house. Okay, got it. They're good. Thank you.
They shouldn't have, but they did. They did, and we, we just tried to treat them. You know, well.
See Subway, Panda Express, Taco Bell. I'm just worried about this.
I see one for Trinidad.
This one in particular was Texas.
I mean, there's not much else.
Won't they deploy, they're deploying somewhere right now?
Right now?
Yeah. Do they remember what that is?
I can tell you.
I did have, while she's looking that up, I did have one question on here, the three thousand dollars we paid in the county. Um, for training, and I didn't know what that was, but I guess we had split the cost of the force training. Uh, with the county, and so we will build and we build them back. I mean, you know, they pay.
Uh, Lake George area.
Lake George, that was it, okay.
Engine six oh two. So.
Which is one of our black shirts. That was the only question I, that I saw here. Of course, of course, it makes your eyes cross and just looking at this. Any questions or concerns for Donna on bills to be paid? Uh, then I will entertain a motion to pay the bills, please.
No, none of them wants to pay the bills.
For just a second, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you, Donna. You may write those checks now.
Okay, thank you.
Jacob, you got something for us? Oh, that's right, we have. Okay, at this time, we have the appointment of new planning zoning commissioner. Jacob, please.
Uh, good evening again. Uh, so Commissioner Tanus, uh, the planning zoning commission is, uh, doing a S B A Zoom. Um, I would like to thank him for his service. He's been serving as a, an alternate on the planning and zoning commission. Um, as you're probably aware, recently, uh, planning and zoning commissioner Rod Weston resigned in September. Uh, per code, um, uh, Commissioner, uh, Tanus was an alternate and he automatically fulfilled that position. Uh, but, uh, Commissioner Weston's term expires today, uh, conveniently enough, so we are. Um, here, uh, for, and I need to clarify, um, on age seventy-five, your packet of memory, this. Uh, this is not, there's not a motion that is required, uh, per code, this is, uh, designation of the final mayor. With consent of the council, uh, does not technically require a motion. Um, but, uh, the mayor has a list of, uh, Commissioner Tanus's, uh, experience and qualification that can, uh, bring it if necessary. Um, staff, uh, definitely, I would like to recommend Commissioner Tanus, uh, to a six-year term, um, expired in, in twenty twenty-eight. Uh, we'll note that we, uh, Lori has advertised for, um, to, to fill the vacant, uh, commissioner position. And, um, and also the two vacant alternate positions, we have not received any responses to those advertisements. Uh, assuming Commissioner Tanus's appointment, we will have to, uh, continue to advertise for the two alternate positions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions, uh, before we hear from, uh, Commissioner Tanus? Okay.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
For the planning and zoning information, you have to be a resident within the city of Leadville as well.
Uh, that's actually a good question.
So, so limiting.
Yeah.
Just because it's not that many folks that are here.
It is. Uh, Nadine, uh, would you speak to city council and just give us some idea of why, uh. You have been with us this long and would like to continue?
Yeah, absolutely. Hello, everyone. Uh, so, yes, I've been with planning and zoning for almost six months now. Uh, it's been a great experience so far. I've really enjoyed it. I think it's. Great to be part of the conversation, to help, you know, shape the city and be part of the vision. Um. And I feel like I've, you know, been contributing and I'd like to continue doing so for the foreseeable future. And I don't have, don't really have anything else to say. I'm open to any questions you guys have, if, uh, there are any.
Uh, I wanted to share with city council some of your, some of the highlights. Uh, you've, uh, you've been operating high rocky homes for six years. Um, and, uh, prior to that, you were in sports marketing. Um, but what's interesting is that you speak four languages fluently, including Spanish, and I, I found that, that pretty fascinating. Is one of those languages Texan?
Yeah, I was born in Texas, yeah, but it's.
Uh, do anybody have any questions for Nadine?
Six years, you really want six years of it?
Leadville's changing, we gotta be part of the conversation and, you know.
Agreed. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Any other questions for Nadine? Does anybody have any issue with the appointment of Nadine to the, uh, planning and zoning board? Hearing none, uh, with the power invested in, in me as the mayor, uh, Nadine, I am very pleased. To appoint you to the planning and zoning commission, uh, board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate it and looking forward to it.
Uh, next up, we have the city administrator report.
All right, well, thank you. The first thing I would like to do is I would like to thank the police department for their. Uh, tremendous support and stepping up really, uh, I think, uh. Honorably and professionally and, uh, to some extent at the last minute to support the presidential visit, so. Think you all know, we are, uh, maybe a weekish notice. Uh, and Chief Edwards was called upon to attend the briefings with city, uh, with the secret service. To ensure that we were part of the, um, security for the event. And I thank Chief Edwards for that, I thank his staff, because we had, um, Officer Corzelle. And, um, was it Officer Hanson?
No, Martin and.
Officer Martin, okay, the, the. And Barnett had long, long, long hours, and so. Uh, the Leadville Police Department was part of the security up right at the, right at Camp Hale. So, as the mayor mentioned, it was, it was really cool to come in, we were bussed in on buses. And right as we got to Camp Hale and turned in, it was our police department. So, everybody who was bussed to that event for the day. All saw our police department as the, you know, the ones who are trusted to secure the actual event, so that was really cool. And I want to thank them because not only was it the officers who stepped up that day. You know, it was behind the scenes, it was Chief Edwards, it was all of his other staff who had to cover the rest of the day and the rest of the job duties that. Um, are normally handled by a full staff. So, um, Chief Edward, did you would pass that along to your staff? I mean, we appreciate that. And how well, um, Leadville Police Department represented, um, the city in such a big event. Uh, you know, this is the president's first national monument that he's designated, and it was lovely. Um, a lot of the news articles carry that it actually occurred in Leadville, which is great, it was wonderful, it was a great showcase for us. So, thank you, Chief Edwards, but, y- you know, really, uh, it's such an amazing event for Leadville. Because you could not have asked for a better day to sell Colorado. You know, it was a bluebird sky when we were bussed up from mid turn, the trees are turning, it was gorgeous at Camp Hale. Um, Senator Bennett mentioned that he ate in the restaurants in Leadville, meeting with World War Two. I think there are only two remaining World War Two veterans, you know, to hear their story about why, you know, how they trained at Camp Hale. So, Leadville was a prominent, um, uh, prominently mentioned in all of this. It's a big deal for us. Um, I think it was a beautiful way to represent Leadville, so we were honored to be a part of it and. Um, I just wanted, Mayor, did you get a picture of me meeting the president?
I had that picture on my phone, would you like to see it?
I would love to see that picture. I'd love to see that picture, um.
She said I had one job, I just had one job.
We're not really sure, uh, but at any rate, it was, it was wonderful and that, you know, uh, everyone did a great job. It was wonderful to see all of our dignitaries visiting our ne- our neighborhood and being very complimentary of Leadville. Leadville in particular, so that was great. Um, so thanks to Chief and your staff for that. Uh, it was a big deal. I mean, not a lot of police departments get to ensure the safety of the president. And job well done, because President Biden made it here safely, made it out safely, so all as well. Um, in other news, good news, we are checking references on a human resources candidate. Um, so that is great news for us. Um, if you haven't heard, the Tabor Opera House is having an open house on Sunday. Um, you know, music and do your own tune kind of thing, closing for the season, thank you for everything, so.
Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, yes. I don't know why I'm on Sunday, but, um, we appreciate our partnership with the Tabor Opera House and thank them for all they've done. Um, I think they've had a wonderful year and a wonderful season, and it's great to see all the things they're doing. Following up on our discussion from a couple council meetings ago, I am trying to, um, find out and work with each department. And their employees to get a, a better idea about our employees' thoughts on our participation in the family program. And, you know, we pushed out, um, paper information to employees and we didn't get much back. In fact, we got nothing back. So, I've been talking to each of the departments about it and educating them and getting their feedback as to whether or not. They think their employees would be interested in the program. I have, we, I have some more legwork to do, but generally the, the thought is that a lot of employees are not totally, some are familiar with it. But not totally familiar with it, but it is, um, a great benefit to them and they would participate in, in it. Uh, they are pleased to hear it is paid, um, leave for certain health conditions and. That if the city participated in it, we would get very, very, very high participation from our employees if we covered a hundred percent of the premium. That's the feedback we're getting. Uh, let's see, we're gonna have a staff meeting on November third. We haven't had a staff meeting in a while, but just to get everybody together. Um, talk about some health benefits information, again, answer questions about the family program. And also just check in with everybody and give them updates and find out how everybody's doing, because we haven't had a full staff meeting in a while. Um, and I think that is, uh, that is it for the moment. Yeah.
Chief, did you get a challenge point from the secret service? To, 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 John, please.
Yeah.
All right. We should probably figure out our own challenge points so we can get better and more. One thing that I was hoping to get there, they got some patches from those, yeah, oh, good, well done.
Yeah, I didn't know about the coin thing until I worked for the federal government, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at, we'll have to figure out where that goes in the budget, but, yeah. Well, I was just trying to tell you, I was joking because, you know, we, we, we were, I think. I am emphasized to Senator Bennett's office that it's lovely to have lots of people flown in, you know, from DC. Lots of people coming from Denver for these events, but if you don't invite the locals, it just kind of feels a little. It's, it's difficult that all the, you know, big, big rigs come in and forget about the locals and. Um, so, I, I will say the mayor got his invitation to attend. He was on the A-list, so he got his invitation in the morning. I didn't get mine until the afternoon, so I think there are a bunch of people who said they couldn't make it and then I got mine, so I'm not really sure. But I'd also know there were some community views nearby who didn't get invitations at all, um, that I don't know, uh, midterm didn't get any invitations. Wow, so, that's, yeah, anyway, we're, we're, we're pushing to be in, at the table, and I think we're getting there.
I will say, and, and you already alluded to it, I was particularly pleased that all, all of the wire services, you know, let out a lot of them.
Yeah.
You know, so that was, that was, uh, dealt a real sense of pride.
Where either the two units aren't necessarily in Lake County. Uh, so that's, yeah, it's, it's pretty much Leadville's end.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, technically it's Eagle County and, you know, we're, we, I think technically I didn't measure the distance, but we are the, one of the closest. Cities, so it was.
Well, nineteen, in the nineteen forty, we were it.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing legal county existed.
Well, we knew it would be somewhat Eagle County centric, but it was nice to see our Lake County representatives there as well, and the fact that we were included, I think, was. It was.
Selfishly, um, I was hoping that, uh, because the president drove on the road I commute on, that maybe it would get some love and attention. Uh, coming up, because it, it definitely needs it.
So, just your road, is that what you?
Yeah, just my road, I'm the only one that's on it. Every morning, Leadville five hundred.
It, it might be a little worse for wear. I, I, there were twenty vehicles, uh, not including law enforcement in that caravan. We were.
I, I saw the video of that. I just, uh, was chuckling like, oh my gosh, that road, see, I wish they'd known that months ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have orders number ten, series twenty-two. Orders amending chapter seventeen point four-four of Leadville municipal code concerning the regulations governing reapplication. Uh, for a certificate of appropriate disfor demolition in the city's national historic landmark overlay district. Say that three times fast, and this is first reading, so, uh, it's not officially a public hearing, if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on this, we'd be happy to hear about it. Um, and I think you know, you may know why we're doing this. Our current code says. That if somebody applies for demolition, and it could be any building downtown. Any building in the national historic overlay district, if they apply for demolition and we deny it. Six months later, we can't deny it unless we, we either purchase that building or move it ourselves. That's the way code is, and it's a huge loophole. We could lose a downtown building in the blink of an eye if we. We don't have this in place, so. Uh, Chris John, take it away.
That's pretty much the nutshell, Mayor. People can just get stuff demolished if they wait a few months, um, and the, the concern especially is that. They can have their, um, demolition application approved without meeting any criteria, without any further review or anything like that. It just says that the building official can, or has to approve this, um, previously denied application. Um, if they apply, uh, six months. Um, if they apply, uh, six months, you know, after their denial. So, um, what these changes do is remove the ability, um, to get an automatic approval after denial. But it does allow them to reapply. Um, so you can reapply under these amendments. Um, you can't get an automatic approval, but if your new application meets the criteria and, um. Is reviewed and approved as a regular application would be. Then you can have your building demolished. Um, so that just puts some, uh, checks and balances in there to make sure that something isn't being demolished. Um, really against the intent of the, um, of, of these code provisions and the intent of. Establishing the National Historic Landmark District to preserve these buildings. Um. If you have any questions, please let me know. Like the mayor said, this is first reading. Um, we're doing a bit of a, the process here is to do first reading. Planning and zoning commission will hold a public hearing, um, to consider this and give their input on it. Because it's a text amendment to the zoning code, um, at their October twenty-sixth meeting. And then, um, the city council will have planning and zoning's recommendation, recommendation. Um, for second reading and the public hearing on second reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't have questions, but I have some comments. So, um. The reason that I am against this is that. There is a natural friction between. Our. Desire to protect historic structures and the desires of property owners. And I think. Right now, we are blessed with a, an HPC that. Seems to really embrace their role as a, um, you know, as an active. Resource for property owners, um, who are considering modifications or demolitions to their. To their property. And I see them very actively working with homeowners and coming to, I think, some very fair and creative. Decisions. And I know the concern is that some big wig will come in and purchase something and just sort of put their foot down and say. I don't care. I'm gonna demolish this and I'll just wait things out. Um, my personal experience has been that a bigger issue is that we don't always have such an active and engaged HPC. Um, I think that giving them this power to completely overrule. Uh, uh, private owners. Decision about their property is inappropriate, and especially in a non-elected body. Um, I think what I would rather see, because I understand that there is this. Um, this concern that that area at that time period is too short. Um, that instead of removing the ability for a property owner to ultimately. Make a decision for their property when. All of the discussions and negotiations with the HPC have failed. Um, rather than removing that right, uh, to extend the time period of the wait. That will give the HPC more time to engage with, uh, in productive negotiations. And, uh, the individual considerations about resources or solutions. Um, and I think especially, uh, for aggressive. Landowners, it would give them pause if the wait were, say, on the order of two years rather than six months. So, um, so I would vote no on this as it stands.
Uh, Chris John, please.
I, um, just in response to a couple of Dana's points. Um, one, uh, city council should remember that the Historic Preservation Commission is a recommending body. It's actually city council who makes the ultimate decision on these applications. Um, so if there is a denial of an application, that's because city council denied it. Um, and, uh, so, uh, Historic Preservation Commission functions kind of like Planning and Zoning Commission. They'll take a first crack at it and give their recommendation and then city council makes the ultimate call. Um. The other, um. Point or, um, item to bring up is that, uh. Typically, as far as timeframes go, um, for, uh, you know, when somebody can reapply after. Uh. Oh my goodness, I'm sorry. My brain is just stopping functioning right now. For whatever reason, um. When, uh, when we're talking about time periods, where you have a denial of a demolition, demolition application. Um, and they have to wait to reapply, the typical time periods for that are usually six months or a year. So, um, you know, I think. There could be considerate, some consideration of, you know, extending the timeframe. Typically, it's up to a year. Um, if city council wants to consider that, um, but it's. Six months is also a very typical, um, timeframe for reapplications. So those are just the two points that I wanted to make.
Thank you. Doesn't change my mind.
Okay, I will agree with Dana. I think that. Sometimes we kind of, um. Value reserve, preservation a little too much. Um, and I would hate for. In the future, us valuing preservation over something else, um, other needs that may come up. Um, as none of us will be here, um. Most likely when this issue comes. Um. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've all been sitting in these seats at the very least. So I kind of agree with that idea of. I don't think necessarily it's on us to fully say, no, you can't do that. Um. I personally don't know enough to be the best decision maker. Obviously, um, I'm not much of a historian and it doesn't quite. Uh, settle with me well, um, so to say. So for me, I tend to lean. Against pres- preservation in some ways. Obviously, I think there's importance of it, such as a favor. But I think ultimately we should be able to negotiate some type of. Some type of, this is where we sit. And we want the building preserved. We should move it. Obviously, these are going to be moved. For part three. Um, or just let it go. I think it's okay to let those things, um, and I don't think this is gonna become an issue anytime soon. So I would agree that we should, uh, not make it to where it's basically impossible for the property owner to. Uh, to square it in city councils.
Okay.
I'd like to answer him, uh, this doesn't do that. This, there's nothing absolute in this. What it does and what it's always done is given, um, the HPC some direction about. How we handle when somebody wants to demolish a building anywhere in our National Historic Landmark District. But it's always been the case that they can also okay. Yeah, so it's not an automatic denial. So, uh, we'll use an example and we'll say somebody buys the Manhattan, which for sale. And they say this, they, they put in a certificate of appropriateness with, for demolition of the Manhattan. And, um, and it is clear to HPC that that building could be rehabbed. Because they just wanna, they wanna bulldoze it and they wanna build what they wanna build. And from a historic preservation standpoint, that would be pretty unacceptable. Um, but it, it doesn't mean that the HPC or city council doesn't have the ability to okay a demolition.
Which I understand.
Yeah, um, it sounded like you thought it was just automatically, they, they weren't gonna be able to do it.
Well, no, but I also understand that it's very unlikely that council will ever approve any, especially downtown. Good reason, fairly, um, downtown demolition of buildings. However, I. I don't like the idea of a. If that being true forever, I guess, like, I think keeping it the way it is now, maybe extending the time so that we have more time to negotiate. And talk about it and potentially to. Bear off anyone who's willing to wait and listen.
Alright, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, now I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, along those lines with what you, with what Christian and the mayor brought up. Um, is, because our, our overlay district is really. Broad and kind of janky over weird parts of Leadville and not, it is. Is there any way to? Approach to narrow the focus to like central core businesses and leave. Primary residences out of it.
Now, would you know to do that?
Primarily for the court, primarily for the reason of, you know, uh, like what you brought up, you know, using the Manhattan as an, as an example. Like our downtown appearance, even though we have this whole national overlay. Did that thing, the long word, um, the overlay district. But real, and, and there is, I think, a, obviously a value to preserving throughout that district. I think, as aside, one of the great things this current HPC has done is has raised the community value of. Buying into that idea that that preservation is important. I love when they highlight. You know, like, look at these residences that have done this this year. And I think that should continue because it creates a community interest in preserving that. But if what we're really worried about is somebody tearing down the Manhattan, can we. Modify it to apply to a narrower range that is not primary residential, but business. In the central core of the national.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but let, let's take, we'll just use an example, a factory one. Some of the most beautiful homes in Leadville. If somebody wanted to scrape that and build, you know, something more modern. You know, would that be okay with us? Because we are in a historic district. We are, we're not just any historic district. We're a national historic district.
And I get that that designation is rare and very important. But I'm also highly uncomfortable with. The city being able to say to a private property owner. No, you can't. You can't scrape it. Um, and, and, and the rea- and the reason is, and like, like I said, I think. I think most, in most cases, and especially with such an engaged HPC that we have right now. Like they work so well with the homeowners and they give them resources and they come up with ideas. And they, they, they actually have, um. Um, oh my gosh, compromise, you know, that, that has been super effective. Um, but I think the danger lies in. Having them present a report where they get fixated on something that really isn't fixable. About a structure, but they just like it and they just wanna keep it around because. They just have this ideal image of it being fixable when really in reality it's not. And having the homeowner have no recourse except to reapply to the same resistant HPC over and over again. And I don't think that making that homeowner wait an uncomfortable amount of time before they automatically can. Do a demolition is, is problematic. Um, I just don't like the idea that they would be told at some level, no. You can't, we're just stuck with this. I'm stuck with this dilapidated home, you know, cause you know, you know what my history with this is.
Yeah.
And, and I, and if we didn't have, the other thing that this app said is having the, is having this. Like, all right, in X amount of time, they get to demolish it no matter what anyway. That also forces the HPC and the city into more active negotiation. Um, I, I.
There wouldn't be a negotiation. If, if, if the end result is, is automatic. That's not a negotiation.
I don't think that's true. I think, I think that having, because that is not what happened with us. But that idea that, hey, if, if we don't keep talking about this in six months, we're gonna be back and you have to give it to us. Actually caused more discussion than if. We didn't have that.
So that's because you were a good owner. There, there's a difference. If we had somebody who was just, they'd made it their mind. They don't want that house there and they're gonna get rid of it. We would not, under the current code, we don't have a choice.
How long has this code been?
About six, seven years. The, the demolition code. Uh, but it's always had this loophole and it's always been a problem.
But I all, I, I'm like, I understand the concerns about good homeowners or bad homeowners, but I have the same concerns about. Good councils and bad councils, good HPCs and bad HPCs, because government. Has absolutely shown itself to be. Really ineffective and, and I, I think there's more, more experience with that than bad homeowners.
I'd like to start with Shannon. Shannon, do you have any thoughts on this?
I'm listening.
Okay, Tracy.
Thank you. Um. I, I agree with the air, um. And that I'd like to remind the council that we did override the HPC about two months ago and allowed a demolition. Of a, of a historic home in the historic district. And it isn't up to HPC, if the man said it, it's up to city council. If you come to us and say. The Manhattan, it's, it's gonna cost two million dollars to rebuild it. Make it look exactly the same for one point five mil, and. They're making a compelling argument and we are reasonable people with a lot of common sense that can, um. Can consider those special cases. My concern is if we allow automatic demolition after a certain amount of time. And I've seen those in the town I grew up in, back in the suburbs of Chicago. We are, our real estate is getting expensive enough and it is worth it to buy a cheap house, knock it down and build an mansion. And it will change the entire look of our historic downtown if we can't control it. And that's my biggest concern.
Thank you, person. Max?
I wish there was a different word because, I mean, I can go either way with adding it. I do feel that there's gonna be more. Uh, your question before, uh, Christian was, hey, how long has this been in place? And, and how many properties have this affected? I think the, the, the question, very few is the answer, I think. That said, I think that to Tracy's point, I think we're gonna see more and more of these as we build for further along. Also, I mean, I, I, I wish that, and, and I don't know what the right word is. I, I just took down a structure that's just outside the historic preservation district. It was a old. One single car garage that had sunk two feet off its mud sill. And was looking more like a trapezoid and leaning my entire neighbor's house. And going across this and wanting to cross members, you could just literally rock the entire rack trap inside it. Right? And rock the whole thing by hand without that much force. So I decided to, yes, get what is considered a demolition permit through the state. It's the ultimate thing, uh, because it was no longer, it was past its useful lifespan. I did take all the wood down and that wood is going to be utilized for an obstruction now. So, um, I'm, I did not. Demolish the building. It was dismantled. And so I'm wondering if, uh, if, uh, if there's something we can do in this code that says. If, two things actually. If it is going to be. Demolished, can we repurpose the wood?
I would say HPC has made that a commission, a condition a couple times of demolitions where they've allowed. They had one property, they had three buildings on the property, two of them, they said you can take down the floor when you can't. And you, you'll reuse the wood and that was agreeable to everybody. So just to your point, I think that's exactly one of the things that they do.
Yep, and, and I do believe I've heard in, um, coffee, Monday coffee, whatever it is. Them looking for bricks for certain things and bricks coming from different locations and make bricks. Of the same area, utilize other places in time, keep his dark character. The other question I have too, and, and I don't know if they, so it's already been done, this is number one and two is. Is that I do know in certain circumstances, and I'm thinking about Summit County in particular in reference. Architects, if they have to take down a building, right, that is part of the historic district. They are to keep the pieces in it. That made it, that are still intact and able to be utilized. So you'll have a beam. With a cross member and some holding pieces or a corner of a structure that's integrated into the new structure. And I don't know what that's called besides.
They have that same kind of thing in northern Wisconsin or somewhere.
You know, like everything else is terrible and this corner is totally intact. And so they have to build it into the design to. To, and I don't know what that's considered, but like, I'm just wondering if there's yet. And I, I don't know about this as a, as a, I, I just. I think we have to go back and review this from Martin Mary tonight, so I don't know if I'm gonna feel comfortable passing this on first reading. Uh, but I do, I'm curious if there's some information that we could bolster into it to, I know they suggested that. Uh, but could that be a piece that if they are to demolish, then they're supposed to take all historical pieces out of it? Or if it is to be demolished, then they're supposed to be, you know, they could also use. Corners if required or whatever pieces to then be part of their new structure. Um, I, I don't know if that's it, that's.
I'd love to hear from Christiana, how much of that is in this ordinance?
Of what Max was talking about, i- as far as like salvaging pieces that can be salvaged and repurposing them?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, how much of that is in this current ordinance?
Right.
Um, I, I don't know that that piece is in there at all in the ordinance itself. Um, I, I will say that, um. This is part one of two parts. Um, there are some additional revisions that staff is, that I'm working on with staff to, um. Propose for this section in particular to help kind of, um, just streamline the processes, make them more consistent and, um. Help HPC do their job basically. And so, um, this ordinance is to address the automatic demolition concern in particular and then. Part two is a second ordinance to address, um, some of those other issues like. Criteria or conditions and, um, process types of things. So perhaps, um. You know, we can certainly talk about that here because I don't think that that is part of this. Or what Max is talking about is not part of the revisions in this ordinance right now, um, and we can talk about that now or. Uh, we could also talk about it in the context of the next ordinance that will come forward.
I can trace.
Laura, I can answer Matt's question. It's, it's just not in code that way as far as using the materials. It talks about, uh, negotiating with the homeowner. So that's how the HPC. Sees the negotiations with the homeowner is if they are going to really be another one, uh, they, we gave them permission to tear that down. And ask that they reuse the wood on something else. And they have yet to tear it down. So. Christiana, I did want to ask you if you could address the part of this demolition thing has to do with. On that, if you get an automatic approval within the six months, there's absolutely no criteria for me to meet. And that was one of the issues, uh, if you could explain that part of it, Christiana.
Sure. Um, yeah, so if, if I apply for a demolition of a structure, of a historic structure on my property and I live in Leadville. I have to go to the HPC and my application has to meet specific criteria in order for it to be approved. Um. If, uh, the, if I am denied, you know, if HPC recommends denial or if city, and if city council ultimately denies it. Um, then I can just wait for six months and my application has to be automatically. Has to be automatically approved. It does not have to meet any criteria whatsoever. Um, and that, I, I think that's what you're talking about Lori, as far as the concern that it's. Just automatically has to be approved and no criteria are applied to that approval at all.
You're taking that particular language out and putting in. That it has to go, has to meet the, a criteria as based on the original. So it does have to. It can come back through in those six months, but it does at least have to meet. The criteria that we based them on in the first place. That's all I was gonna explain. Thank you, Christiana.
I, I guess just to clarify, I'm sorry, but, um, you're saying that this would then. Keep the six months, but we're, we're allowed. After the six month demolition happen under the criteria of this has to happen to be demolished? Or is it, would it still then be the same process of? Regardless, like, let's assume that. Well, I guess my problem with it is still the same of. I don't know who's sitting in those seats and I feel uncomfortable giving that, those groups of people the power to ultimately say no. And completely say no for negligent reasons. And I think that's very possible. It's happened in the past in a community and I think it's. Bound to happen in the future, necessarily given time comes progress. So I think. I, I'm caution about that, but if it's that. They get approved or they get denied, but in those six months they come back and say, I will demolish it with this. They automatically get approved? Is that like how it works or?
No, that would not be correct. Uh, I would say, uh, go ahead, Christiana, sorry.
I, I was just gonna say, so what would happen is, um. Uh, going back, I, you know, Christian, maybe you apply for demolition of a structure on your property. Um, but you didn't meet the criteria and, um, your application was denied. Um, you could come back in, uh, six months and reapply if your application at that point meets the criteria. Um, that are set forth in the code, then your application. The idea is that your application would then be approved. So that's the, that's the process and it wouldn't be an automatic approval. Um, because somebody has to assess the application to see if it meets those criteria. And the way that that happens is that HPC first reviews it, gives a recommendation and then city council. Um, reviews it and makes the ultimate decision. So hopefully that clarifies things.
Uh, I would like to, to say. This has been something I've wanted for a long time and I've known this loophole existed in, in code. And the reason is, um, we live in a historic town. We live in, and to Tracy and Max's point. Um, I don't want money to come rolling in here and, and it can and it might. Uh, and just wipe out historic buildings just because they don't care for it. And right now they can do that. They being, you know, the ubiquitous day. And, and so I'm worried about, you know, Christian's worried about, uh, the abuse of power on our. I'm much more concerned about the abuse of big money. And, and completely bulldozing Leadville. I'm worried about that.
To be clear, I have the same worry. I just think our solution is much different than to say that we need to preserve a building. I think. There are other solutions to that issue. Um, downtown being an exception, I'd be in favor of this if it was specifically applied to downtown, but I. Genuinely think there are. Many more issues than this, and I don't think this necessarily encompasses a solution to our. Potential problem, not even potential to be clear. It's about fifty-six percent secondary homeowners and decedent. So not even potential, but current problem of money coming in and, you know. Potentially bulldozing their buildings. I think there are other solutions to that issue that don't involve. Restricting someone due to historical preservation reasons, um, especially people who are part of the community and such. So I, I'm just not.
Okay, without something in ordinance that would allow preservation of these buildings somehow. Where demolition of them would be automatic after a certain amount of time. Then, uh, it would happen. It will absolutely happen. That's my opinion.
And there's no potential restriction on if it is demolition, let's be, let's say the same value. Worth value of the previous home. There's no restrictions able to be put in that or is it? Like, we can't make an ordinance that says after the six months. You are allowed to demolish it, but it must be worth the same. Value, property value that it was before. Is that, uh, allowed? Is that too complicated?
I don't think there are any restrictions on the homeowner that are more under as the demolition.
Okay.
That's, that's what he's.
So, no, no problem. Stop, 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 stop. Max, what did you have?
I just wanted to make sure we're not talking over, I heard Chapin, so I want to hear what.
I'm sorry, the, the, the cultural or the historic value is cultural. Is not, there's a strong margin that that doesn't equate to a monster.
Well, I see. Um, we have a couple of decisions that we need to make though. We can vote on this ordinance and then in the subsequent ordinance that Christiana has referred to, we can deal with things like. Um, do, if, if we allow somebody to demolish, we then, then put in place certain parameters. Uh, in, in the, the, in the, in the subsequent ordinance, uh, that might control. The look of it, the use of those materials in a, in a, in a new, in a, in a, in a new build. Is that a true thinking?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the one, two names of this right now.
Or we could sit, say, we want that incorporated in one ordinance. Uh, in order for us to consider it properly. So either we can vote on this. On first reading to go to second reading, which is not law. And then see what's in that second subsequent ordinance. That might fulfill some of the needs that we're thinking about in terms of preservation, even in the face of, of demolishing a building. Um, or we want it all rolled into one ordinance. If you think we want to vote on this tonight, then, then if someone wants to make a motion, then we can vote out. If, if we have consensus from city council, we'd rather see more of this, of more of what's the, the completeness of an ordinance. That might all be in one ordinance, uh, then if we have consensus on that, we can go that direction. I'll start with Max.
I would like to, um, see an ordinance that. Combined bill.
Thank you. Okay.
I would like to see an ordinance that increases the amount of time before. Automatic approval of demolition and add conditions. Some of the things that Max was talking about.
Okay, that's true. Christian. Thank you. Tracy?
I'm okay with those ordinance, but I cannot talk with one thing combined.
Thank you. Shannon?
I, um, while I agree with Tracy, I think I'm, I'm leaning more the other way in terms of wanting to see the, the, the bigger piece, the bigger part.
Thank you. I'm okay with this ordinance as well. I think it's a, it's just a step. In the right direction. Uh, however, I think there's enough. Debate over this and the, and wanted to see an ordinance that is more in all encompassing. Of the direction that we want to go, um, that I'm okay with that too. Uh, do, do we have a reasonable consensus from city council that we are going to ask for? Uh, a, a full ordinance that would be this, the subsequent ordinance that would be part of this. Christiana, in what timeframe were you thinking that might be available?
Um, well, I, I might defer to Chapin on that question. We have some red lines for the bigger ordinance. Um, and I think that we are just, uh, working through, um, staff comments on that at the moment. Um, so I, I might ask Chapin what that looks like. I forget, we may have talked about a timeframe. Previously, um, and I will also ask the question of city council, um. About whether you guys would like to have a work session before, on this bigger ordinance? Before we bring it forth for first readings so that we can maybe hash out some of the details and get a consensus from the, uh. Full council, um, on some of those details and the direction at least, um, for some of those things before, like I said, take me back to first reading.
Do we think it would be reasonable to have a joint session with, with historic preservation commission? And of course here, you know, their, uh, you know, philosophical thoughts about where we're going with this ordinance in the first place.
I do.
And everybody's points of view, I just disagree with some.
I'm sorry, Chad, was that you spoke up?
I said I do. I would like to hear that.
Let's, uh, let's see if we can schedule a work session. It could be a while. You know, we have budget work sessions right now. It could very well be December or January before we get on that work session. And, and, and to Christian's point, yeah, we, we, we've been, we've been under this cloud for quite some time. And maybe, you know, it's not, the immediacy of it isn't as dramatic as, as. You know, I'm making that to be, but I, there's somebody who buy a building tomorrow and we're stuck with the old ordinance. So. Uh, we, we'd be stuck with the demolition of a building whether we liked it or not, and that really bothers me. That having been said, I'm perfectly okay with a work session where we can schedule it and especially try to. Uh, iron out a, a full ordinance in two, both. Yes, Tracy?
Are there any existing demolition applications?
No.
What about a temporary or port until it's a free call?
I'd love that idea. We'd have to do it, you know, pretty quickly as you roll. Uh, maybe at the next city council meeting, we would have, uh, in resolution, a moratorium, uh. What do you think, Chapin?
I, I just would defer to the set, like the city attorney regarding what criteria, um. Has to be in place in order to enact a moratorium upon, on that. Is, is there any, are there any statutory regulations on? What has to be met? What kind of building activity do you have to be experiencing before we can enact a moratorium?
Would it be a moratorium on any demolition, uh, of a stored building?
I, I think there should be maybe a little safety outlet there considering like if Max, Max's situation came up like my garage slumped into my neighbor's house like. We may not want to wait for that sort of thing.
Christiana, what do you think about that?
About a moratorium?
With some sort of an emergency clause in there that would allow us to, to, uh, look at. Uh, a, a, a situation that needs attention more quickly.
Basically an unsafe building exception.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would probably be fine in the, in a moratorium like that.
Uh, can you have it ready by eight thirty?
Uh, well, I'm gonna turn my video off and get to work on it.
Uh, we will, uh, with, depending on Christiana's schedule and, and, uh, we will then schedule, uh, a moratorium. And then schedule a work session. Um, are we okay?
So that would be for the next regular council meeting.
We would, we would hope so. I didn't want to.
Well, I, I, I'd like to just get it put there. If we need to bump it, then we can bump it, but let's put it for the next regular city council.
Shannon, anything?
Yeah, I do have a question and this might just be my ignorance showing, but instead of a, a work session. Could we ask for a presentation on that to city council and then we don't have to wait through our budget season? We could get them sooner?
Boy, I hate to put, I hate to put that on, yeah.
Is that too much pressure?
Six weeks are really gonna be tough. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's the additional burden on our all volunteer HPC. Did you put together this in really short order, this big presentation?
Okay, and I also want it to be interactive and collaborative in nature and I don't think a presentation quite leads to that.
A joint workshop, Mike. Let's see if we can put together that.
I, I just wanna say to everybody in this room. It is an honor working with everybody to get through this. I mean, this is a big year where there's a lot of. Differing opinions and I think a lot of folks brought some great solutions to the table. That we can reconvene, perhaps put it in its right place for the, uh, expedition of what, you know, I, I think some folks. There, there's some middle ground that we can make here, uh, to make more folks feel comfortable about this moving forward. And I don't know what the exact rules of the ordinance is gonna be, but I just wanna say. Just hearing and being part of like what just happened in the last five minutes is like. Absolutely cool to witness and be part of. So. Keep on keeping on.
My.
For the minutes, would you like me to write the ordinance fail or then if I'm in the table?
Uh, the ordinance is in the table. Okay, thank you all. Great conversations, uh, to, to very distinct sides of this, but. Uh, there may be a minute round. I just don't know when it's gonna be. We're gonna find out. Thank you. Okay. Next up, uh, the public, uh, meetings planner, uh, Mike, would you get some, before we go over this, I'd like you to talk about what you've done. Uh, with the website and how the public meetings planner will be more present in the future.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, turn the screen here.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and um clear the screen here. Um, I've uh read the city of Ludville website. Um, hopefully it's a little bit more user friendly now, so we've got a button button here that goes to our website. Um, and then at the bottom, we have current events. Uh, and you can see that it's the public meetings planner here. So when you or staff uh have a meeting, like for example. Um, a joint work session with uh HPC at a later date. Um, you can, staff will go ahead and put that in the public meetings planner in their Google calendar. And then it will automatically update on the website. Um, so now people can see um when the different meetings are going to be with public meetings. Um, and then that way. Everybody will form.
My, can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
And I know that we are unfortunately here, we're losing here. But is there a way to make that public meetings planner interactive where there's links to the public meetings for the public so they can do?
I'm sure there is, um, what what I've done right now is wait, click on the city council right here, information. Um, and you scroll towards the bottom, you can see watch live, watch previous meetings, resolutions, ordinances, agendas, and.
Oh, so.
And the link connection.
Yeah, so the link connection is there and then towards even lower here now we have a city Ludville map. That people can click to and then it'll go to Google Maps to see all traffic information and our weather information.
That's amazing.
That is so much better.
Isn't it, it's so simple too.
Well done, Myda.
Actually use that website.
Well done.
Thank you.
I have trouble just finding my own like email address on that.
Yeah, the the point that Martin and I talked about is we're gonna have to be maybe more uh respectful of this. Because now it's it's going to be up there, um, before I, you know, I thought, who cares, you know, but uh. Maybe it's more important.
But where I'm meeting is now the first, the sixth month, that's sixteen, so what, it's in November or?
Yeah, I have that change where November the eighth is no longer a meeting and November the third is dead. And it's at six o'clock instead of four, right? Okay, got it.
Mayor, as the public meetings planner, I just want to let you know that I will be unavailable or. It's gonna be really close on the first, the mayor did here.
On the women's person, okay, we'll put a bunch of important stuff on that, I mean, that's a thing, it'll be close. I appreciate you being here, not, I know it's.
But I do, it does make me wonder, I know Tim wanted to have another family discussion, but on the condition that we are all here.
That.
So when does, that puts us up against the deadline, but we. Don't we have to?
We have to do, if if we don't, if we don't, if we don't do anything, we opt in, but by January first.
Okay, okay, so there's a little more, I thought, okay, cool, nevermind. Yeah, we still have time.
Okay, anything on the meetings planner, uh, Tracy already mentioned that change for the lower meeting. Uh, did you capture that, Myda?
Definitely.
Thank you very much. All right, in terms of stuff that may not be important on there, later this week, Thursday, Friday is the mayor's summit in Denver. Um, and we haven't had it in a couple of years because of of COVID, so I'm pleased that they're holding that in person again.
So that means you're not gonna be at the housing fair having a pie thrown at you?
That's, that's exactly what it is.
I I have volunteered to get the pie for the city, so we we shall see.
Yeah.
If your aim is any good, come come later in the day, because that's when I'll be there.
Tabor House on Saturday from twelve to three, Ski Coopers having their public open house from one to four. Uh, Trick or Treat Street is, um, oh, that's a week after that, Pumpkin Patch on Saturday, the twenty ninth. Uh, from eleven to three at Trick or Treat Street on Sunday from one to three, lot, we never run out of stuff to do. Anybody else have any changes to the public meetings plan?
Is is it true that the regular wheeling of one in November, uh, I I almost, I see it's going.
Well, because if we got, didn't we kick it because of the, because of the election? We don't have a.
We have a budget meeting on the ninth, we have a city council meeting, the joint meeting with P and Z on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
And that's it for.
So one regular meeting in November.
But we also agreed to a budget meeting on the twenty ninth.
Well, and we have a regular meeting in the first. Of November, so there's still two.
Well, the first is regular and then where's the other regular?
Twenty second.
That's a joint.
The preceding hour.
Oh, okay, I just not seeing.
There's nothing on the twenty second, but you know as well, I'm at that very technical, I just scheduled it all.
To Thanksgiving.
Yeah. And then the twenty nine we had agreed to, that's gonna be the budget part.
Final, it just needs to get placed on.
Incidentally, to your your issue, which was a very good issue, we have now flushed out the um, um. Flushed out, uh, sorry, I can't, yes, they're all in there, there there are approximations on what we think is gonna happen. And uh, right now it shows, I think, uh, left, uh, two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars.
That's a number I can.
Precisely, and I get that, so.
Appreciate that.
Next time you see the budget, it's it'll be, and that number may change because we're gonna have some budget meetings with departments between now and our next budget session.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You were, you know, you were very correct that without that in there.
My brain is only this, have that much capability.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, um, in terms of various, what did we talk about earlier? I did want to say three people film festival, it was really exceptional, two hundred and eighty-three people attended that film festival. Huge turnout, two eighty-three, uh, and it was, it was excellent, uh, any council reports?
Oh, as you may have heard, I will be leaving Full Circle this Friday. Um, it will be my last day, don't have any current plans on where I'll go, probably some. Something to get me moving, um, but things just didn't work out uh the way that uh I don't think would have, so.
Sorry to hear that.
I will no longer be the housing person at Full Circle and or the point boost for general postal stuff at Full Circle.
Any other council reports? Okay, thank you all very much, this was an excellent city council meeting, it is eight twenty and the city council meeting is adjourned.
I'm sorry, was it, you said eight o'clock guaranteed, was that, was that what you said earlier today, eight o'clock guaranteed?